Average property values in the city, preliminary numbers as of a week ago, is we're up about 6.2 percent. House to house, house on the house. And we've got a little bit more, it's up about 7 percent total because we have a couple new houses. If you look at just year to year, it's a little over 6. So that's, that's kind of our standard, normal appreciation if you will here. The, none of the new tax law changes that the, that the government put in, the state just put in a bunch of new tax laws about cities and how much they can raise. None of those apply to us. They apply to what we're zent basically because of our size. So that's fine. But that's kind of the difference. So where I see us heading is probably this next year, depending upon the appraised value. Because next year we have to make 168, about $168,000 payment. So that's probably gonna be somewhere around another 10 cents. So we're headed toward 45 cents. That's what it's gonna take to make double payments. So for this next year, we're probably headed toward 40. We won't know until we finalize the numbers in July. And then the year after next, 45, and then it'll stay at 45.
To be clear, when you say 45, that includes the 25.
Right, correct, the total tax rate. So, and then after four years, we won't be making double bond payments, we'll only be down with one payment. And then that council can decide to roll back. Kind of like what we're doing now, where, you know, we're subsidizing and we're only doing a nickel. You can repeat this again in four years because there'll only be one bond payment again. So that council will decide what they want to do.
Depending on the conditions of the loan, we maybe don't pay her.
Might go refinance the bank. And just then shorten the term down to maybe 10 years, and then it's bank debt again. So, but basically, there's, there's a four-year overlap where it's gonna be tough. But five years ago, we had five years where we jumped into this thing and we said it's gonna be tough. You know, for the next four years. And we already did this, where we've been through tough times and we're in good shape. So that's the difference here. As far as the expenses go, it's kind of funny, I was looking at the, the city expenses. And here's kind of the individual lines. And we're spending a little bit less this year than we spent in 2006. So the year before I was elected, we actually spent more money in the channel fund than we're spending now 13 years later. So it, it's, it's interesting. But these are the individual lines. You know, you can see here, up here on debt servicing, this is the big jump, we're gonna get the actual debt servicing here. Taxes, you know, that's about a, roughly a 5 percent increase on our general taxes. Everything else is pretty straightforward. You know, we do about 30,000 in, in building permits, it's kind of our norm. We just got two more building permits in yesterday, Linda? Two more came in yesterday. So, and we've got three underway now, so this, it's, it's picking up on our building permits. So that looks pretty good. The only other question Serena, I think this, so these are the revenues. So this is all pretty straightforward on the revenue side. So one of the things that, that's going to change is that what most cities do is there is a transfer that happens between the utility fund and the city fund. And it's because there are services that the city provides. So for instance, like if you went into Little Elm and paid your utility bill, it's in the same building as the regular government offices are in the same building. So they have to pay, you know, there's an electric bill and so there is a, a cost allocation that goes on because they're sharing the space. And they're sharing the security bills, secure the buildings and the alarm system and... So most cities, they're coexist between the utility system and the city. They usually have the same workers or the city secretary is still doing the bill paying or the audit, you only have one auditor. The auditor doesn't audit, he audits them separately, but there's only one audit report. So typically, there's only, you know, we write that check out of the city. So there is a lot of, of interaction in our town that the city does for the utility system. All the banking, all the bill pay, all the account maintenance, everything's done through the city. Now, the reason why it's going up in this next year is because in the past, Summer, Summer worked, and Summer had two jobs, she was split. What Summer did was, Summer did the utility billing and she was paid out of the utility fund. But half of her job was the building permits and the permits and the scanning and the scheduling, the inspection scheduling and, and all that stuff. Summer was doing that. So Summer was doing the city stuff. So, but what happened is the utility fund would pay Summer's whole paycheck. So they would basically get credit on their side of the ledger because Summer was doing city stuff. Well, Summer's hours have gone down by, you know, 90 percent. So now it's flipping the other way because we're doing, there is no more credit. Summer's not doing the city work, she's not doing any of the city work. Now we're doing more work. So that's why that flipped up. And if you want to see it, I can show you next time. There's like 14 different costs, nine different allocation bases. It's a Ken Guthrie spreadsheet special, it's got 16 different colors. It's a, it's an impressive spreadsheet that we, I plugged the numbers in. It reallocated based on square footage and acreage and number of people and number of water connections. There's like 16 different allocation bases that go into this thing. But that's what that is, that's a, a transfer because of the services provided by the city.
I have a question, what's the mission of the cities?
What's what?
Lead of the cities.
So what happens is sometimes we end up doing code enforcement mode. And, and so, well, we do code enforcement after you have not responded to a lot of stuff. We do a code enforcement, what happens is we offer you the chance to pay the bill. And if you don't pay the bill, then we just put a lead over property. And that's been going on for years and years. We just had somebody, one of the empty lots over here sold, and I think the leads were back in like the 90s. You know, so we had, we had leads that were over 20 years old. So the original $100 was now like 700 because you take 25 years of interest to, you know. So that's what labor seats are. They just show up, they're random. No, they're not random, they're just, they happen. And that's kind of the end of that. Okay, so that, that's the revenue side. You know, a lot of our revenues don't matter in a sense, they're just guessing, you know. They're, they're not gonna be material, whether we get two driveways or three driveways isn't, isn't gonna matter. A lot of the stuff, just to, just to double up here. A lot of these, these things here relate to revenues, to these kind of permitting stuff, like electrical permits and that kind of stuff. If, if this doesn't happen, then we don't pay the building inspector. So they offset. So, you know, these, most of this revenue goes to the building inspector. So if we're paying the building inspector money, we have to take it in here. So if we're way off on this, if this is too high and we don't get the permits, that's okay, and we don't pay the building inspector either. So they just, they cancel each other out. Okay, so on the expense side, it's kind of usual stuff. There's a couple of things that are different than in other years. One thing here is that there is no town engineer, this is because it's all CapEx, it's going the roads. So it's, it's a capital expenditure. I think the one question we had here was the parks and the playground. So when we did the roads five years ago, the one thing that took it on the chin was the playground. We just cut it to zero because that was kind of one of our few discretionary expenses where we were, you know, it was just all hands on deck. So, I put 3,000 in there. What I'd like to try and do is keep the playground kind of continuous improvement, just a little bit at a time if we can and, you know, try and do something. Serena, that's your?
I think 3,000 is fine.
You have some ideas or, you know?
Well, you ought to have something in there for repairs, we had some problems with the slides, we got the facility, you know, so children are hurt. So we did some of that and then inspections on it, we do yearly inspections. Yearly or actually a couple times a year? Yearly inspections, you know, make sure it's safe for the kids. And then we have an open space, so maybe adding another piece of equipment in there, but just kind of keep it up to date, so it's safe.
Do you want to do the quarter?
Yes, there are two pieces I have my eye on, they're around 1,500. And then install it. So I think 3,000 should be okay.
Yeah, I think, didn't, my question is, we, we paired up the M D for something, right? Did we share?
Right, right, yeah.
Yes.
We shared a launch? Yes, two, or last year, last year. Not sure. Launch. I'm kind of a great president to pull out. No, and launch, yeah, I mean it...
I think the launch one, that's great.
Yeah, it looks so nice.
I picked weeds, I picked weeds yesterday.
Oh, don't tell me that.
There was a handful of them.
Okay, all right, well, that sounds good. The only other things we've got, there's a couple of minor things in here. I'm just gonna alert you two that at some point in the fall on this budget, you know, we're gonna have to move the mailboxes. We gotta get the mailbox out of the street, so they're gonna come here. That's what this, one of these town hall improvements, this 4,000. We have to get the mailboxes out of the road.
We need to add on that.
So we have to, we don't have space here under the awning, we have to pour more concrete. But it's still like, we have that dirt, we have the area we thought would be grass, it's been grass. You know, back there, so I think we measured it, it'll fit. Boxing a bit here. But that's something in the fall.
What do they do, just take those, unbolt those ones, carry them on?
Then bolt them, they bolt them back down here and then we just demo that concrete slot. We're just gonna dip them out. So that's gotta happen in the fall. At, at that point, I'm probably gonna bring you, I might bring you something where we, we might expand this parking lot here. We might widen kind of where that tree is, on the left side of the tree. Make a little bit more concrete space, you might be able to get a little better stacking or a little easier in and out, I'm not sure. There's a good chance we may do a little tweaking with the driveway to, because we're gonna have twice the volume in the house. You know, people coming up there. We might, I don't know yet, but that's, that's a possibility. And that'll be underneath town hall improvements. On the, a little bit further down, we have a, where is the... Where are the emails? Thanks Carl. Is there something, any comment?
Nope.
Nope?
Well, actually, what's the, the start date for the roads? And is there a consideration for some interim stopgap stuff in Melo, on the start of Melo either?
So we don't buy that anymore.
Or actually, I guess, no, that's on, that's right here.
Uh, we're gonna do some stuff, I think Sam's gonna do, he's gonna loosen her around her link press here, I think. But basically, it's gonna be bags of...
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting renovation, just so people don't start coming to the city for repairs to their cars.
New business line. Thanks Carl. Um, Linda, what's the one that, was it town meeting, town functions? Okay, so town functions here is $500. I think the idea that we had talked about last year was we offloaded, we asked the M D to take over the town functions. So I think this is the first time we actually put in the budgets, we dropped that from about 3,000 down to 500. And I think that's there just, I don't even know, I mean, we could, we could make it to zero literally, but for now, it's, it's just a small placeholder. But that was kind of, you know, the only difference, all the other numbers should be, you know, very much the same. Our travel and meeting expenses is a lot lower, you know, so we, we're, we're doing well there. You know, on the expense side, the term bills have been very low, I think the last one was about $200. So, you know, we're really doing well on the expense side, we're way under the budget on the expense side this year. And I don't know why we'll continue. Okay, so that's kind of the expense side here. When you look at the utility fund, um... So last year was, you know, a little bit different, so last year we took in 155, but we had the water problems during the summer. So, you know, we really don't have a good baseline to operate on relative to last year. Relative to the exact date, as of June 1, we are, we are 0.8 percent ahead of last year on water, as of the same day of water building. So we are pretty much right on it. And then the sewer and, and solid waste is basically the same amount. So we, as of June 1, we're right in the same place we were last year here. So that's why, the numbers, basically, we're gonna have a couple of houses this year and that's kind of the increase, just based on the fact that we should have one, two, three, four, five houses, five houses by next summer, there'll be five more houses in town operating, which is lovely, you know.
I have a question, you scroll back up, what's capital improvement?
Where?
The estimated 2000, we're up four more pages.
Up four more pages.
Right back.
What is, this year? That's 74? That's, that's a certain...
Oh, that's what, uh...
That's a certain...
Okay.
Yeah. So the auditor will pull that out of operations, right?
That's where it lives, I just wanted to mention, okay.
And before, we used to put that up in the engineer line, but now we're...
That's where I would expect this.
Yeah, we're dropping it down because the auditor helped capitalize that into the roads. All right. Utility fund, listen again, this is very straightforward, not much happening here. It's just, I just take the numbers and add one or two percent to the previous year numbers and we should be just fine. The, the utility fund is doing well, we have about 100, we have about 110,000 sitting in reserve right now in the utility fund before we've actually started. So I, I didn't print the numbers out, as of the end of May, the wells are running 5.8 hours a day, which is same as it was last year. So we're, we're not even close to the 20 hours a day we're running, you know, which in August, that's where we... So we're just chugging right along, the wells are running fine, but that's, you know, we're kind of right on the norm as far as...
The price is not lower.
Was the wells not like that?
Or are they staying stable?
Yeah. And it's, it's funny, I've been trying to measure the flow on the wells and every time I go over there, they're off. So, and I won't turn them on because if you turn them on, you gotta wait five minutes. So I just, I've been trying to catch it and I finally caught it a couple days ago. And it's exactly, exactly what it was. The big well was putting out 99 gallons a minute, the other well was putting out 68. We're right, absolutely dead water.
So, so our revenues are, are pretty good for water, right? But last meeting, you talked about the idea of the old water ordinance, potential, I don't remember what they call it.
I was wondering, are they arrears?
Oh, the water, yeah, the, the, yes, the, the water, yeah.
I'm sorry, because based on that, that would impact some of the, the revenue.
And you put it as a mayor's?
Potentially.
Um, you know, it, it could, it's, that's a good, I mean, but the problem that we had in the past, and we had this a couple of times, we had well issues like three years ago. We've, we've had, what, what was the problem then? We had, what's it, the second well cracked out?
Well two knees.
Well two knees. Yeah, it, it malfunctioned. So we, we had, we haven't made it like three summers and we're rolling out something happening. But the, the problem, what we're trying to get at is, is people, unlike the village, aren't good about changing their behavior. They're just, you know, it's just, this is the way they're doing it and they like to keep doing it. And so, yeah, you know, I'm looking at the well going, you know, these are only on six hours a day. I mean, I'm not gonna put on the marquee, you know, watch your water, they're only running six hours a day. But we had to pick a start date, it seems like everybody else does, what is it? Memorial Day and Labor Day seems to be the universal period. But what I'm hopeful is when people will fire up their, like my system's off, I haven't turned it on yet. It's literally hard off. And when people do and we say, well, do the three days, they'll stabilize. I'm hopeful.
Right. Well, that's what I was hoping, and then with the revenue, I just, I mean, we, we decreased last year, right, a little bit, budget and then...
We, we did. Yeah, the question...
Another 15,000, so that's why I'm, it was just a thought, I, I don't know if we were being a little over zealous with that number or not.
Yeah, you know, the, the trick is we've got five new houses, that's, that's the wild card.
The additional, yeah.
It's the five new houses. And, and that's, and I think we know what, because three of them are small. I mean, they're, they're, they're over here, you know, and they use more, right?
No.
I forget which one.
I think Melody uses three times as much water as like Hillside, we did a comparison on the two landwalk streets.
Yeah, it was...
And it's really just the large lots that are using, you know, the irrigation.
Irrigation.
And you can see it in the...
Because we've got...
Because it goes up four times, obviously, there's not as much water in it.
We got the new house gonna be done on Stowe, we got the other one at the end of Cary. We got two over here.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Woodcrest, and Wood, that's right, Woodcrest. And, and we're budgeting, I think, a pretty large surplus for the, the water fund. The only wild card in this is if we have to, you know, extend that to sewer. And I don't know when that would happen. That's not something that is, that we need to even plan for until that actually, something happens. That might be a year from now, you know, that's dependent upon that development. The expenses are pretty much, you know, the usual numbers that we put down. We cut back a little bit on some of the scheduled maintenance. We've already been doing this now, we've, we've already been exercising the valves and, and basically, after a couple of years of doing this scheduled maintenance, we've caught up basically to, to our maintenance program. So that looks pretty good. Every else is kind of straightforward, you'll notice the payroll. You know, we were at about 11,000, then last year it went to 1,200. Okay, so you can, this is, this is why I admin fee changed because this was being paid and now half of that was the city. So that was, you know, part of that, part of that issue there. So that's why this is dramatically lower. All the other numbers are, you know, water repairs, sewer repairs, we're way ahead of the game. We've only spent 1,200 on sewer repairs. And these sewer repairs you see are not the sewer line, that's at the plant. That's the clarifier, that's the, the digester having a problem. That's, part of that is like right now, Mark brought up, we have a polymer injector where we, we have the drying bed and it injects polymer in there. And that injector was having problems. So Mark rebuilt the injector, so that'll be a sewer repair. But you know, we're not digging up any sewer lines and repairing sewer lines. Water, we're, you know, we're right here and we had two water leaks this week. So, you know, we're gonna be right around where we should be. The sewer tap install here, that's for the current year, we had to put in some sewer taps. And part of that is over there on Green Meadow, there's not sewer taps, they didn't put them in. So they pay us for the sewer tap and we actually have to put the sewer tap in. So that's literally just a reimbursement. So we're, we're getting the money because we have to put the taps in.
One on Lake Crest.
You know, and that's true, there's still this one over here.
Is there, I don't, the water tap, I don't see a line for water tap install.
No, you know, we haven't, we found all the water taps. They put in all the water lines, they just sometimes, especially on, on Green Meadow, the sewer's on the opposite side of the street. So they, we, we can't find any sewer taps on Green Meadow. The water line runs up the street anyway to the fire hydrant. So I think they just, it was easy to put the water lines in, they just didn't put in the sewer.
Okay, so it's just, so the new houses come in, it's just gonna be a meter something?
Yeah, so they'll, they'll pay us the tap fee and we turn around and hand that to a little service and we say, you know, put in the tap. Here's what you're gonna get paid to put in the tap, put in the tap.
It's not, it's not going out, you're gonna start with that.
Yeah, so it's strictly a reimbursable, reimbursable number.
We could consider, as a group, looking at the water repairs, possibly increasing that slightly, right, based on what Mark just told us? Because if we're, if we're running about 10,000 per year in this year, do you want to clean those screens or something?
That's sewer.
You know, talking about the well.
Oh, the well, yes, yes, yes.
Because if he, if he said, hey, they're running 2,000, you know, you're at 6,000 already if you're running, we might consider increasing that somewhere in the line.
That might...
Probably could capitalize that broken, it's already fully depreciated.
Well, the problem is that our capitalization threshold is five grand and I don't think we're gonna be, we're gonna be near that. Yeah, you know, it's a good question, where does the screen go if you're gonna do that? Is that scheduled maintenance, is it a repair, is it, you know, I mean, it can still be CapEx, it just won't be capitalized.
It's not broken, so it's a maintenance.
You know, so it's probably maintenance. You're gonna have water scheduled maintenance until six.
You guys can fall on the reed or whatever.
What made us think that they jumped water maintenance last year to this year, five to eight? Originally, Sam was, we were trying to get ready for the roads. Part of it was trying to figure out which valves do we need to replace, which valves are working. And so it was trying to go exercise the valves on, figure out, do we need a valve, you know, in certain places. So the thought was we'd be doing a lot more of that. And we have done it, but basically we're, I, I think we're done with water maintenance.
So, yeah, we might consider raising that category.
Let me...
So you guys should pump that up a little bit.
Okay, I mean, you, you, for which, which line are we talking about? Water scheduled maintenance?
Water schedule maintenance, yeah.
Uh, you wanna go back up to, you wanna go up to 10?
Probably, he said, he said, maybe it's a bit...
25, 20?
Well, I thought he said 15,000 or something, 10,000. So maybe 2,000 a well?
Well, we probably left it at 2,000 a well, right?
You would think, whichever one, whichever way.
You just take one down, you can be down to two days.
Yeah, so 10,000, that gives 4,000.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
It's probably worth it, I mean, 16 years seems long.
16 years is the new one. Other wells, that's 45.
Big trouble if it goes down.
We only have 45 years.
A million or 2,000?
I'll make that one 10,000.
I think what we can do is we just kind of plan to do that, like maybe in like three years, right?
Yeah, I mean, to me it's...
Maybe one, three years, maybe that's, so we don't necessarily have to take it.
Maybe do the oldest one for this year or something.
Yeah, well, let's see, yeah, let's just see how it works.
Increase it 2,000.
All right, so I'll make that line be 10, again, it's fine, that's 10. All right, okay, that's a good catch. That's this year.
Okay.
That's the current budget, all right. So then on the, so for the CapEx here, so typically what I do for CapEx is I try and come up with some potential projects for the, for the CapEx. There's two things that we have to, one of the things we have to do, if you bend to the corner of Woodcrest and High Ridge, that intersection is a major utility Bermuda 20 angle. Right now, the street is actually acting as the barge ditch, I don't know if they're in the rain, water runs down on the edge of the street and doesn't go in the yard. So when Rod and them built that house on the corner, they did away with the barge ditch, they obliterated the barge ditch. And unfortunately, right now, the valves are literally, the valves at that corner are about a foot off the street. So we have to move one of those valves to the other side of Woodcrest. Because it's, it, we gotta redo the barge, it's just a terrible corner. And we gotta get that square away before the street comes in. Because we've gotta reset that barge ditch and we have to move the valves. So there's one valve that has to be moved to the other side of the street. So that's one, Sam has one. So that's one, and the other issue is the fire hydrant that is in front of, in, in front of, what's your brother's name? Chris, Chris's house, Chris and Rick's house. Across the street, that fire hydrant needs to be replaced. That one's been there a long time, something Phil Graham was kind of on that. So originally, we were gonna move it to the other side of the street to put it on Woodcre, on Meadow Lake. But, right now, the, the thinking is, it's, it's not, that wouldn't matter, to the fire department, it doesn't matter, that twenty feet, one side of the street is, is not relevant that is, there's no real upside in moving it, just removing it, so, that's kind of the idea with, you know, and we had to do this before, we had to get the utilities squared away before the roads go in, and part of this is going to come out, as Brittany was saying, when they do those, that survey work, we'll probably get a better idea about any other valves that are in the way, that we want to move. The other issue here deals with the wastewater plant, we had an ongoing project at the wastewater plant that, I mean, Clint and I, we worked at this for several years, and that, at some point, we have to underground the utilities at the sewer plant. We have, we have power lines hanging in the air, we have three different power poles down there, everything's daisy chained, you know, when they move one, they just left it going to the same pole, it goes to a box, it's empty, and then it goes from that empty box to another, it's, it's a horrible setup down there, and we know we need to underground it, and we've talked to Co-Curve about it, and it's just one of these things, keeps getting bogged down in the inversion.
Yeah, they've been real minimal to, to do it, that is just...
It's been our fault that we just haven't figured it out.
Well, there's things we have to do on our end, right? Move, transport, and...
Yeah, it's just been something where, we know down the road, we have to fix the sewer plant, you can't have over, with metal tanks full of water, we cannot have high four-hundred-and-eighty volt power hanging, dangling over the top of the metal tanks full of water, that's just not a good thing. So, that's on here as a potential project, and that would be a sewer CapEx, some of the water CapEx, and then as far as the town, we've talked about the, the concrete road project would be the survey, and the mailbox relocate, and I threw MDD in there, maybe, who knows, maybe the MDD will help out, moving the mailboxes, you know.
But that would be at the demo, that'd be enough, that's too much labor, basically.
Well, I, that's why, two parentheses with question mark, again, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm just going to give everybody...
Will we have to demo it, really?
Yeah, we got to, because we got to get that concrete out of the way, so they can lay the concrete from the road.
It depends on when you want to demo it, right? You can pay the con, the construction company.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. I mean...
I'm just curious what that...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get a good estimate, I know what we were before to move them.
It's a placeholder, I think.
Thank you. That'll be sometime in the fall. I, I, I wouldn't say there's reason to do it now in the current year, I mean, it's done. They're not in the way right now. The only, the only benefit to doing it sooner rather than later is that it might take some load off of that terrible area, you know, where the, where we have all the holes.